Calling to order the Weaver City Council Meeting of July 13, 2009. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The city clerk, please take role.
Dean Goke.
Here.
Terry Wambel.
Present.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
Wanda Sang.
Here.
Mike Stites.
Here.
Karen Adams.
Here.
Karen Berry.
And Lena Rotola.
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of June 22, 2009?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Stites. I do believe we need some abstains, please. Please poll the council.
Motion carries five to zero with Councilmembers Rotola, Wambel, and Goke abstaining.
Thank you. We'll move on to proclamations and ceremonies. We have Chief Brendan tonight to give out an award.
Mayor, council, I am pleased to see you today. I would like to recognize Tim Zimmerman. Tim recently was the recipient of the Colorado Association of Chiefs of Police Volunteer of the Year, and I have a summary of the award proclamation that I'd like to give to you as citizens. Tim, on June 10, 2009, you volunteered to volunteer in the year presented to you as a member of the Weaver SWAT team at the Colorado Association of Chiefs of Police Annual Conference. Your fellow SWAT team members nominated you for your unselfish commitment to being a team medic for the past eighteen years. In 1991, officers of the Weaver Police Department SWAT team began to score the benefits of a tactical emergency medicine committee for the team. SWAT officers felt that the addition of a paramedic greatly enhanced team's effectiveness and efficiency. Paramedic Tim Zimmerman was known by the team as being one of the most talented and capable medics in the area, and he was approached and offered this volunteer position on the team. The SWAT team had the first viable tactical emergency medical system, or TEMS, program in the state of Colorado. Tim built this program from scratch. He provided TEMS support, and the Weaver SWAT team became involved in the Rocky Mountain Tactical Team Association, which is a state association of tactics to assist other teams in the development of their own programs. For the last eighteen years, Tim has served Weaver's Police Department, the Rocky Mountain tactical community, and the citizens of Wheat Ridge with no compensation whatsoever. He has provided an example of unmatched selfless dedication. He has lived up to each and every expectation of those original SWAT officers. He has provided the very best medical care under some pretty trying and difficult circumstances, often times with a joke and a smile. The city of Wheat Ridge has benefited greatly from the unwavering dedication of Tim Zimmerman, and we are honored that the Colorado Association of Chiefs of Police have recognized him as a 2009 Volunteer of the Year, and also as the second volunteer in the last three years honored by the state association that has come from the Weaver Police Department. So on behalf of the city of Wheat Ridge, the citizens of Wheat Ridge, and the police department, I'd like to present Tim with his plaque from the Colorado Association of Chiefs of Police, three Citizen Volunteer of the Year Award, presented to a citizen of Colorado who, without other compensation, distinguishes themselves through long-term and selfless volunteer work for Colorado Law Enforcement Agency, presented to Tim Zimmerman, tenth day of June, 2009. First, I'd like to thank the chief for his support of the program for all the years and through the whole community. It's been quite an honor to be out there. Just to let them hang out with me and vice versa. So we've had a great time together, and again, thank you all for your support.
Thank you.
Mayor, I had a letter, a citizen award letter that Derek Costo, I'd like to read. He wasn't able to make it tonight.
He's already at a softball game, but again, I think it's an important message to the community about its citizen involvement. On April 24, 2009, while driving home, Derek stopped at a red light at West 38th Avenue and Wadsworth Boulevard. A female, unknown to him, threw herself on the hood of his car yelling for help. The female was pregnant, had blood on her face and hands, and cuts to her neck. Female stated that her boyfriend had physically assaulted her. Derek led her into his car and had foresight to drive her to Lutheran Hospital, the emergency room, to ensure that she and her baby were both all right. While driving towards the hospital, the female observed her boyfriend following her. Derek proceeded to the hospital, made sure she had inside safely, and waited on seeing to make a statement to the responding officers. Derek went out of his way and took a great risk in letting a distraught stranger into his car. He was prudent in taking her directly to the hospital and making sure that she made it inside safely. He could have easily dropped her off and drove away, but he waited to provide information to the police. He showed courage by getting involved in an unknown and difficult situation, initiative by taking responsibility for the endangered woman and her unborn child's safety, perseverance by making sure he got them to the hospital even as the suspect followed, and integrity and respect for remaining at the hospital to talk to the police about his observations and actions. In this single action, Derek has shown that he has qualities highly recognized by the Weaver's Police Department for citizen involvement action when he could have easily just earned an award. The department would like to recognize him with a citizen award and the Weaver's Police Department ceremonial coin, and I will mail this in for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Moving on to citizens' right to speak is reserved for members of the public who wish to speak on any item not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed three minutes. Others may donate their time to the speaker at the podium for a total of nine minutes. When you are speaking at the podium, you will see a green light when you start speaking, a yellow light when you have thirty seconds left, and a red light when your time is up. So please step forward for public comment, state your name, and spell your last name for the record, and your address or your city.
I think the city should be enthusiastically proclaiming that Wheat Ridge is forty years old. On August 20, Wheat Ridge will be forty years old. There's been no public discussion that I know of from the council. I've seen nothing on agendas saying that it would be discussed. There's been nothing in the paper. Nothing has ever been mentioned. I'd hope that perhaps there might be a citywide celebration of maybe a picnic or some informal setting where you could get acquainted with some of the people who ensured the fact that you could be sitting on a Wheat Ridge council today. Some of those people are still around. They're getting older. Perhaps by the time there's a fiftieth celebration, there will not be too many of them around. At this particular point in time, seven of the first elected officials, there were nine, seven of them are still around and possible to reach them. Wheat Ridge didn't begin when new people came on council. It didn't begin thirty-some years ago when I went on the council. It didn't actually begin at the time of incorporation. It had a hundred years of proud history prior to the time that it became a city. People were proud of their community. They were proud that they had a post office. They loved their way of life. They were proud of the fire districts. All in all, they loved Wheat Ridge. And what the incorporation did was to ensure that all of that did not end in 1969. In 1969, there was a mass petition filed asking that Wheat Ridge and Lakewood, all of an area known for both these communities, be annexed into Denver. And there was a long delay before a decision came back. When the decision came back, finally Denver turned it down, but by that time, both communities were well on their way to considering incorporation. And it wasn't that anybody was particularly happy to or anxious to be a city. They had considered themselves a refuge for the people who fled Denver and came to the county for relaxed living. However, it became increasingly clear that the only way a community could protect itself from being swallowed up by some other community was to be incorporated as either a city or a town, depending upon the size. When this was all going on, with crisis with Denver finally ended, and then the next crisis was that the Lakewood petition for incorporation gave its north boundary as I-70, which of course included all of Wheat Ridge. In order to prevent having Lakewood have the first election, and then Wheat Ridge would not be able to have one because we would already be in Denver, the people who were working for the incorporation, and they were known as citizens for Wheat Ridge, their chairman was Ed Anderson, who became the first mayor, they rushed and did everything they could to get the petition for Wheat Ridge in prior to the petition for Lakewood, and managed to beat the Lakewood petition by three days. As it was, of course, both communities had a chance to vote. Both communities voted for incorporation. But had the Lakewood petition, the Lakewood election been first, we would have been Lakewood with never a chance to have voted for Wheat Ridge. I don't think anything any future council could do would ever equal what those citizens did for the city of Wheat Ridge, because it would have ended in 1969. People liked the way of life in the county. They liked having orchards. They liked the roadside prig stands. They liked having horses and kids all over the place. They were very happy with the county living, but it simply was no protection. They could have been swallowed, and in this case, would have been Lakewood had it not been for being able to incorporate. We're thankful that the Carnation Festival people are willing to acknowledge the people who were involved in all of this, and somehow feel a little bit sad that the officials of Wheat Ridge weren't interested in having a celebration sponsored by the city of Wheat Ridge. We, at least the people who will go to the festival, will see some acknowledgement for the people who did all of this forty years ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else to speak on a public comment? Moving on, next is approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Councilmember Stites.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are four items on the consent agenda. Item 1A, Resolution 33, 2009, approving participation of Wheat Ridge citizens in the National League of Cities Prescription Drug Discount Card Program. B, approval of a courtesy bench, bus bench, trash can, and maintenance services license agreement. 1C, Resolution 34, 2009, approving an intergovernmental agreement for the management of the 2009 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant and amending the fiscal year 2009 general fund budget to reflect the acceptance of the 2009 Edward Byrne Justice Assistant Grant in the amount of $23,786. Item 1D, approval of payment to Murray, Dahl, Crouchen, Meister, and Rinald LLP for June 2009 city attorney services in the amount of $18,945. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve 1A, 1B, 1C, and D.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda, seconded by Councilmember Sang. Mr. Goke.
Yeah, I want to speak to a couple of items. One is the payment to the city attorney and their firm. I have to say, this is one of the lower amendments that we have had on this particular item. Everybody is watching the budget. Everybody understands that times are difficult, and that includes the city attorney and his staff, and we appreciate them keeping their eye on the ball and being aware of where we're at in this community. Also, could the chief please find a grant agency that has a shorter lead-in, please?
We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Sang. Discussion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public hearings and ordinances on second reading. The order of testimony will be city staff, the applicant if applicable, and then the public, followed by council discussion and questions. Please keep all comments remain to the subject. Item two is Council Bill 13-2009. I'm going to open the public hearing. Councilmember Langworthy.
Thank you, Mayor. Council Bill number 13-2009, an ordinance providing for amendment to a planned commercial development, outlined development plan to allow additional uses for property located at 4100 Youngfield, case number WZ-09-04, KNC RV Doing Businesses Camping World. Executive summary, the applicant requests approval of an amendment to a planned commercial development, outlined development plan for property located at 4100 Youngfield Street to allow additional uses on the property. The additional uses proposed are recreational vehicle sales and rental. No physical changes are proposed for the property. Planning Commission reviewed this request and recommended approval at a public hearing held on May 21, 2009.
Thank you. Will the city clerk please assign an ordinance number?
Yes, Council Bill 13-2009 will be assigned ordinance number 1441.
I need to swear everybody in tonight, so if you're here to speak on this agenda item, public and staff, please stand or raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth in this matter?
Yes.
Thank you. Move on to staff report.
Good evening. For the record, Meredith Reckert, Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. This is case number WZ-09-04 for KNC RV Doing Businesses Camping World. Approval of an amendment to a planned commercial development, outlined development plan at 4100 Youngfield. I would like to enter into the record the comprehensive plan zoning ordinance case file and packet materials and the contents of this digital presentation. All notification and posting requirements have been met, therefore council does have jurisdiction to hear this case. Okay, this is an aerial photo, I believe taken in 2008. You can see the property outlined in red. Youngfield runs along the western boundary with the Clear Creek open space to the rear. Again, this is an amendment to an existing planned commercial development, outlined development plan to add two additional uses to the allowed uses for the property, those specifically being recreational vehicle sales and rental. The property in question was zoned planned commercial development, having been rezoned from A1 in 1980, and it actually included the property both to the south in this location, subject property, and then the property to the north. Again, it was eighteen acres. All four of the lots have frontage on Youngfield Street, and again, they run from basically the bluff north of 38th up to the Clear Creek trailhead adjacent to Youngfield Street. This is the plat for the property. The subject site is, let me find my cursor, located right here at 4100 Youngfield. And as I mentioned, in 1980, an outline development plan and zone change were proposed for the entire eighteen acres, and as is typical, uses allowed in that PCD included business offices, service establishments, banks, retail and wholesale businesses, appliance sales and manufacturing with general office warehouse. Vehicle sales were not permitted in 1980 at that time. This is a copy of the final development plan for the property to the south. The FDP was approved in, I believe, 1981, and included up to 130,000 square feet of building area, and tenants in the building include a day spa, several building contractors' offices, and some research labs, and this is the piece directly to the south of the subject site. This was the FDP approved for the subject site, the Camping World property. Again, it was the second phase of development within the planned development, 4.1 acres of land, and approved by city council in 1991 to allow about 27,000 square feet of building area. All those improvements are currently in place today. The intent of the FDP approval was construction of the building intended for RV accessory showroom sales, office, and installation and servicing of RVs. This was the final component of the land left over in the original planned development. It was approved, let's see, FDP was approved in 1993, and at the same time, there was an amendment to the existing outline development specifically for this lot to allow RV sales. Couple expansions later in the 90s and the 2000s, and I would note that this is, the northern two lots combined, it's got about 3,800 square feet of building area, and the rest is used as RV sales and display area. Some slides of the property. First slide is taken looking, from Youngfield, looking towards the interior of the lot. You can see the existing signage and the structure with the service phase over on the right-hand side of the picture. Again, the front of the property, moving just a little bit south. This is the southern interior drive aisle. Moving along into the rear, there's an existing loading dock you can see in the picture on the left-hand side. I had to include this, a shot of the Clear Creek greenbelt open space. Looking north on Youngfield, front of the property, of course, is on the right-hand side. Looking south, this is a picture of the original office warehouse development, which was the original property built, and then the final picture is the new Youngfield I-70 underpass, which is directly across the, from the drive aisle with that property to the south. Okay. This is a little bit closer view of the property. You can see the existing layout. As I mentioned, nothing on the site has changed since 1991. I would note that how we got to this place was in the autumn of 2008. The tenant on the property applied to the city of Wheat Ridge for business licenses for RV sales and storage, excuse me, sales and rental. Those licenses were approved by the community development department, which were in conflict with the existing ODP on the property. Based on the issuance of the licenses, Camping World consolidated some of their sales. They did close a store on Colfax and move everything up to this location, including the existing inventory and the sales personnel. When staff became aware of the problem, we notified the tenant, and we proceeded with this application. I would note that all the fees have been waived for the filing of this application. No additional ODP submittals have been required, and the modification to add the two additional uses will be memorialized through an affidavit of amendment, just for this lot only, not to the property, for the property to the south. Now, the city attorney, who is present tonight, is aware of the situation, and he has approved of the process that staff suggested. Typically, with an ODP, you would have a big 24 by 36-inch set of plans that you would be looking at. Because this is such a minor amendment of the addition of just the two uses, we did not, we decided not to put that upon the applicant, therefore we have a little bit different process. It's still considered an amendment to the existing zoning, though, and therefore staff has to take a look at the evaluation criteria that we use when evaluating a zone change request. So in a nutshell, the criteria and the conclusions that staff has reached include the following. First of all, that there's changes in the area impacting property, including the annexations and infrastructure improvements to the west, which are expanding the existing commercial center now and in the future. That the additional uses are compatible with area businesses and will promote the concept of clustering-like developments adjacent to each other, so people can price compare as they shop. There will be economic benefits resulting from the additional uses. All existing infrastructure is in place and does not need to be upgraded. And finally, there will be no physical changes proposed, and there's no negative impact on the health, safety, welfare, traffic on and off-site. We did do a limited referral on this case, primarily the Wheat Ridge Fire District, the police department, and Public Works, and no one had any concerns. Planning Commission did review this at a public hearing on May 21. There were no public in the audience to comment. They did approve the application with three conditions, that the RV sales and rental inventory be located as specified on staff's exhibit in the Planning Commission report, that all fire lanes be kept clear of obstruction, and finally, that sales and rental of other types of vehicles is not allowed. With that, we are recommending approval with the same conditions included in your recommended motion, and that would conclude the staff comments at this point.
Thank you. We'll move on to the applicant. Do you have any comments? Can we move on to public comment? Do we have anybody here to speak tonight on this agenda item? Seeing none, we'll move on to council questions and comments. Mr. Goke.
Mayor, does this also limit the sale of personal recreational vehicles such as personal watercrafts, snowmobiles, and stuff like that? Are they going to be allowed to be sold there?
No, they're not.
They're not?
Only sales in RV, or only RV sales and rental.
Okay, how are we defining RV sales? Are these motorized vehicles, non-motorized vehicles, or are they all a combined total package of all of those?
My recollection of the inventory that they've got on the property are mostly self-motorized, but I believe they do have some non-self-propelled.
Go ahead and come on up and, yeah, please come to the podium and state your name and your last name for the record, and spell your last name and your address or your city.
Blake Beard, Denver, Colorado. B-E-A-R-D is my last name. Everything that we sell is licensed through the Department of Motor Vehicles. Snowmobiles, watercraft, things like that do not become motorized there, except for their personal trailer that they're on. Everything we sell is considered, you pay taxes on it and everything through the DMV. So that's the difference on what we sell.
Okay, we're excluding cars from that motorcycle.
We don't sell cars, no. We're strictly recreational vehicles.
Okay, I was just trying to find out, you know, bring that in a little bit.
I understand.
And find out what that was. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Goke?
No.
Any other questions from council, discussion? Shall we close the public hearing, and are motions in order?
Thank you. I move to approve Council Bill number 13-2009, case number WZ-09-04. A request for approval of an amendment to a planned commercial development, outlined development plan to allow the additional uses of RV sales and rental on property located at 4100 Youngfield on second reading, and that it take effect fifteen days after final publication for the following reasons. One, there's adequate parking on site to accommodate the new uses. Two, it will legitimize the RV sales and rental occurring on the property. Three, the evaluation criteria support approval of the request with the following conditions. One, RV sales and rental inventory be located as specified on staff's exhibit, Exhibit Six of Planning Commission's staff report. Two, all required fire lanes be kept clear of obstruction. Three, the sales and rental of other types of vehicles is not allowed.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Rotola. Discussion on the main motion. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Meredith, would you mind raising up the thanks? It's too dark. Moving on to item number three is Council Bill 15-2009. I'm going to open the public hearing. Councilmember Stites.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. With great pleasure, I introduce Council Bill number 15-2009, an ordinance amending Chapter 22, Article 1 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the creation of a vendor's fee. Executive summary, amends Chapter 22, Article 1, Section 224B of the Code of Laws by allowing a vendor's fee of 2% with a cap of $100 per reporting period. The ordinance further provides that vendor must file timely returns in order to retain the fee. I'd also like to read this. In the 1980s and 1990s, the city of Wheat Ridge had a vendor's fee rebate on the books. Code of Laws, Section 2240B, the vendor's fee was a rebate of sales tax collected by a vendor in the city. In essence, it was a small reimbursement. In essence, it was a small reimbursement of sales tax collected for the time and paperwork required by the vendor to collect taxes for the city.
Thank you. Will the city clerk please assign an ordinance number?
Yes, Council Bill 15-2009 will be assigned ordinance number 1442.
Do we have any staff comments over and above the executive summary? Mr. Dahl, I think you said?
I have a rather lengthy PowerPoint that I'd like to...
Twenty or thirty pages?
Nothing other than the, the summary. The summary does a good job describing what's going on.
Thank you. We'll move on to public comment. Please step forward for public comment if you have any comments on this agenda item number three. Please state your name, spell your last name for the record, and your city or your address.
My name is John Marriott. M-A-R-R-I-O-T-T, and I reside in Arvada, Colorado, and own a business in Wheat Ridge. I'm also the chairperson of the Wheat Ridge Business District, and I'm here to speak on this subject as chairperson of the Wheat Ridge Business District. At our June board meeting, the Wheat Ridge Business District passed a resolution in support of renewing the vendor fee within the city of Wheat Ridge. We think there's some, some good reasons for it. One, the cost, effort, and time required to both collect the sales tax, as well as fill out the forms and then pay the sales tax on time, is not inconsequential. One thing I'll note is that back in the mid-nineties, that the smaller businesses within the city of Wheat Ridge filed their sales tax quarterly, and now they're required to file it monthly. And so, at the same time that the workload went up by threefold, the, the small fee that the retailer was able to collect went away. And we think that bringing back this vendor fee is a, is, is, is good for that reason. The other thing we think that's really, as a Wheat Ridge Business District, that we really believe is a, is an important factor is, we think that the vendor fee within the city of Wheat Ridge will help us foster a better business climate. Particularly, we think it'll help us foster an atmosphere that will, that will lead to better recruitment of new businesses to the city of Wheat Ridge. I think that the, the recruitment of just several medium-sized businesses that Wheat Ridge doesn't currently have will more than make up for any loss of revenue that the city might see, that, that what we really think is that we'll be able to increase the amount of sales tax collected by having a, a small rebate here. Just by improving the business climate gives us another tool in our efforts to recruit businesses to the city. My own personal self, as a business owner, a retail store owner within the city, I also believe it's the right thing to do. I realize in today's budgetary terms, giving up money is a hard thing for you guys to do because obviously, there are budget gaps existing and, and proposed. But, we want to be careful to not take too short of a view of this. If we look at the long view of this, that this can, is an investment moving forward more so than just giving money back now. So, both as a business owner and as a Wheat Ridge Business District, we're all for passage of this proposed ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Terry Amalfitano, A-M-A-L-F-I-T-A-N-O. I live in Denver, and I own a business in the city of Wheat Ridge. And I'm here to speak on the ordinance regarding the creation of the vendor's fee or the proposed ordinance. As a business owner in Wheat Ridge, this, this rebate is, unless I get wildly lucky, is not ever going to be, mean much to me, but I applaud the city for the spirit of the ordinance, and hopefully, like John said, it will help us attract some bigger businesses that, to whom it really is important.
Thank you. Do you have anyone else to speak on our public comment? Move on to council questions and discussion. Ms. Berry?
I won't be supporting this at this time. As several people alluded to, we have some severe budgetary issues here. We're going to have to cut at least three and a half million dollars from this year's budget, which is an substantial amount. I'm afraid that in doing that, we may have to cut some of the services we already provide to businesses, which really help in marketing the businesses and other business supports, such as like the Business District. Through the Budget Oversight Committee, some of the things that they were talking about were some tax increases on businesses. It seems it's a little premature right now to go ahead and do the vendor's fee without looking at this total picture, in terms of trying to do the vendor's fee now and then possibly doing a head tax or some other business tax increase in the future. So, it seems to me that we ought to be looking at this comprehensively, speaking to businesses about which is the best way to support them, and taking some time with this rather than putting this through as one element and not looking at the big total picture.
Any other comments? Mr. Goke?
Generally, I, I don't think I'd be supporting something like this if it wasn't for the fact that our neighboring communities are struggling just like we are. They also have shortfalls in their budgets and stuff like that, but their vendor fees have maintained intact throughout the years. Ours went away years ago, and what we're trying to do is basically bring back and justify being as equal as our, our neighbors around us that have the same sort of programs in place already. And, again, Wheat Ridge needs to be equivalent to the people around it if they're going to attract those businesses that will make a difference. Those businesses that might go someplace else without the kind of help that we, as a city, are starting to provide through different means. This is one mean. The other mean is that we're looking at different fee structures for construction. We're looking at different fee structures in different ways, so we can allow those businesses to function and operate more efficiently throughout the year and still do those type of improvements. Also, I think it's important to, to recognize that Wheat Ridge has a hard time maintaining a tax level because of the micro-businesses that we have in this community. They're great businesses. They're mom-and-pop businesses. They're people, young entrepreneurs, who just want to make a living and provide a service to the community. And I think that's extremely important, that we somehow recognize those people and say, you know what, we understand that's a lot of burden. We tell you, we want money for, you to collect money for us, but we're not willing to reimburse you. I don't think sets a good precedence, but, and I really don't think we're talking about that great deal of money, but it's just a gesture that is extremely important to the businessmen of this community.
Any other comments? Ms. Adams?
As Mr. Marriott said, we do have a few budget gaps at this point in time, and I'm looking at three point five million dollar, trying to budget, balance our budget next year. As a deficit of three point five million, every little bit helps. I certainly think in the spirit, it would be a wonderful thing to do, but I fear, right now, what I'm hearing from the Budget Oversight Committee, that we might be needing to look at our businesses and we would be hurting them in the long run if we don't look at the overall picture, because there could be some things coming up that in fact, would be detrimental to encouraging businesses to come in due to our financial status. So, it concerns me that we need to look at this on an overall picture, and we need to look at the fact that, at this point in time, our neighbors, Arvada, Bloomfield, Thornton, Westminster, do in fact, have a similar fee in place. The financial impact on the city right now would be a hundred and seven thousand dollars, and then another couple thousand for implementing the program. So, at this point in time, every time I look at my packet of information that comes, I always have been very cognizant and prudent with looking at financial impact. Financial impact right now is of critical, critical situation, and I think that in lieu of jumping and giving something back that in fact, we really don't have in our budget to give back, we need to look at our economic development as a, as a whole and as a different picture than this particular item, so I won't be supporting it.
Mr. Stites?
I remember years ago, watching that meeting on TV that night, and I thought it was a tremendous slap in the face when they took away the vendor fee to, I don't know, raise money or whatever that they were doing at the time, because we ask our businesses in this community to do an awful lot, and it takes a lot of time to prepare your sales tax, keep track of it, turn it into the city. It, I don't know, at two percent, it's not going to be much at all, you know, but, and you can't really call it a stimulus or a windfall or anything like that. It's a stimulus, if you want to call it that, that will affect all businesses in Wheat Ridge, not just a few, not just some, but it will affect all businesses in Wheat Ridge, and I like that. I think we do, like Dean said, have, have to recognize the businesses in this community. There are a ton of older and younger, too, for that matter, mom-and-pops, and I think it's just an effort and a goodwill gesture, and it, to me, in all honesty, years ago, it should have never, ever been taken out, so I will support this tonight.
Any other comments from council for staff? Gal, close of public hearing and a motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 15-2009, An Ordinance Amending Chapter 22, Article 1 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning the Creation of a Vendor's Fee on Second Reading, and that it take effect upon adoption with the implementation of October 1st, 2009.
Second.
We have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Womble. Discussion on the main motion. Please poll the council.
Motion carries six to two with Councilmembers Berry and Adams voting no.
Thank you. Item four is Council Bill 14-2009. I'm going to open the public hearing. Councilmember Stites?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 14-2009, An Ordinance Reappointing Presiding Municipal Judge Christopher Randall, Increasing His Hourly Compensation and Approving a Presiding Municipal Judge Services Agreement. Reappointment of Presiding Municipal Judge Christopher Randall, Approval of an Increase in His Compensation and a Renewed Service Agreement. The charter requires the council to appoint a court judge every two, for two-year terms. Judge Randall's current term expires June 25th, 2009. He has requested reappointment on the expiration of his current term under those terms and conditions set forth in this ordinance and the attached Presiding Municipal Judge Services Agreement.
The city clerk, please assign an ordinance number?
Yes, Council Bill 14-2009 will be assigned, ordinance number 1443.
Mr. Dahl, would you recommend the motion be made now, or do you want to go ahead and have a public comment or public hearing?
I don't believe there's, I told the judge that it was likely this motion would pass, so he's not here, and it's appropriate for you to simply take the motion to continue.
Is Stites going to make a motion?
Okay. I move to continue Council Bill Number 14-2009, An Ordinance Reappointing Presiding Municipal Judge Christopher Randall, Increasing His Hourly Compensation and Approving a Presiding Municipal Judge Services to July 27th, 2009. I further move to refer the matter to a City Council Study Session on July the 20th.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to continue this to July 27th. Discussion on the continuation. Councilmember Berry?
I, I won't be supporting this. I, I think we have enough information to make the decision now. I, we've been giving, given information about comparing the hourly rates of judges across the city, and it's pretty clear to me, and I think to many of you, that we are paying the judge very fairly. Given our budget situation, I don't think we can entertain a salary increase, and I think it just is kind of a waste of time to go to a study session and then come back here, and we'll probably be approving his contract without a salary increase. I think most everyone knows that that's where we'll go, and I think we ought to just get it over with now and, and, and pass his contract without a salary increase.
Mr. Goke?
And I, I agree with Ms. Berry on, on this item, but just like, just like when I get the ticket and I get the chance to go in and see the judge and tell him my side of the story, you know, I'm really realistic about the fact that I'm not going to get what I want, but at least I had my day in court and I had my opportunity to explain my side of the situation. And I feel, in this particular case, that's kind of what I owe Judge Randall, and that is an opportunity to come and speak. Whether or not, I, I seriously doubt if I can support a pay increase, and I agree with Karen Berry, but every, every dog gets her day in court, and if he, if this is the way he selected to want it, I think I owe him that respect to do it that way. Thank you.
Ms. Adams?
I, too, have nothing but respect for Mr. Randall, but, Judge Randall, but my concern here is also the fact that the Budget Oversight Committee has come to us and we have looked at our budget, and it's pretty obvious, also with the background material here, that regardless of what he is able to tell us, which I will believe that he does, and some of his services are different than perhaps some other services for other cities, at this point in time, there were words that were stated at the Budget Oversight Committee about furloughs, watching the news tonight and seeing what Denver's doing, and then looking ahead at our study sessions and looking at some of the hard decisions we're going to have to make, some of the lengthy committee meetings we're going to have to have at our study sessions on exactly how we're going to come up with balancing the budget. I really feel out of respect for him. It would be disrespectful to have him come, knowing at that point in time, we do not have that money. We are looking at different staffing situations. He would not be an exception to that, and that I would like to proceed with his expert work at the current salary, and I don't see any necessary reason for him to come in and to be able to be put through knowing the fact that the city doesn't have the money for that type of an increase. Nothing else. Thank you.
Any other comments from council? Discussion? We have a motion to continue. Please poll the council on the continuation.
Motion carries five to three with Councilmembers Rotola, Berry, and Adams voting no.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is ordinances on first reading. The purpose of first reading is to notify the public of the date and time of the public hearing. Amendments are allowed on first reading. Public comment is not allowed on first reading. Move on to item five is Council Bill 16-2009. Councilmember Langworthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Council Bill Number 16-2009, An Ordinance Providing for a Zone Change from C1 Commercial One and C1 Commercial One with Use Restrictions to Planned Commercial Development and for Approval of an Outline Development Plan for Property Located at 11808 West 44th Avenue, Case Number WZ-09-3 RV America. The applicant requests approval of a zone change from C1 and C1 with Use Restrictions to Planned Commercial Development and Approval of an Outline Development Plan for Property Located at 1108 West 44th Avenue. Because the applicant does not have a specific development scenario, the case is being processed with a nonspecific ODP, which establishes just permitted land uses and development standards. A future-specific ODP will be required when an application for site development is proposed, requiring additional public hearings in front of Planning Commission and City Council. No physical changes are proposed for the property at this time. Is that motion in order?
Motion is in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 16-2009, Case Number WZ-0903. A request for approval of a zone change from Commercial One and Commercial One with Use Restrictions to Planned Commercial Development and for Approval of an Outline Development Plan on Property Located at 1108 West 44th Avenue on First Reading. Order published and public hearing set for Monday, August 24th, 2009, at 7:00 p.m. in the City Council Chambers and that it take effect fifteen days after publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval on first reading, seconded by Councilmember Rotola. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Item six is Council Bill 17-2009. Councilmember Rotola?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 17-2009, An Ordinance Amending Section 11-22 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning Conducting Business Within the City Without a Valid Business License. Is motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 17- I move to approve Council Bill Number 17-2009, an ordinance amending Section 11-22 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning conducting business within the city without a valid business license on first reading, ordered, published, public hearing set for Monday, July 27, 2009 at 7:00 p.m. in the City Council chambers, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Sang. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to one with Councilmember Goke voting no.
Thank you. Item seven is Council Bill 18-2009. Councilmember Sang.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill 18-2009, an ordinance amending Chapter 22, Article 1 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the requirement of a license to collect sales and/or use tax. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill 18-2009, an ordinance amending Section 22 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to require a license to collect the sales tax on first reading, ordered, published, public hearing set for Monday, July 27, 2009 at 7:00 p.m. in the council chambers, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion for approval, seconded by Councilmember Langworthy. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. That concludes our agenda for tonight. We'll move on to city managers' matters.
I have nothing, Your Honor. Thank you.
City attorneys' matters?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
City clerks' matters?
Nothing this evening.
Councilmember Rotola.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank all the people who attended Wheat Ridge 2020's vision for Wheat Ridge. And also, I want to thank our staff that showed up, Mr. John Stone, and Ms. Payne, and Ms. Richter. It was really a very informative meeting, got some really good ideas, a lot of nice information. So thank you for attending.
Councilmember Berry.
Just to piggyback on the Wheat Ridge 2020 workshop with the Urban Land Institute, Wheat Ridge 2020 has also been selected as one of eight semifinalists for a national grant through the Environmental Protection Agency to look at unique ways for redevelopment along 38th Avenue. Every year, they only select three or four communities, and they bring a team of experts to -- in this case, they would be doing a citizen participation process, as well as bringing this team of experts to evaluate ways that we could do redevelopment along 38th Avenue in using smart growth principles, as well as this particular grant has the urban farming element in it too, that we could look at ways we could redevelop some of the multifamily developments and commercial developments too, and try to work in some of our heritage with urban agriculture. So the grant was put together again by the Wheat Ridge 2020 staff, and it's an honor for them to be selected as a semifinalist, and they have a very strong application. And so hopefully, we'll be able to announce here soon that they've received that grant.
Thank you. Ms. Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also believe Saturday, I was unable to make it, but I think the Jefferson County Association of Realtors also sponsored, and I wanted to thank them for being a sponsor of last Saturday morning, because I really did apologize for not being able to be there. But I am very grateful that they also participated. And the other thing I wanted to bring up and bring to really our community's attention is the fact that when Mrs. Rotola and Mrs. Berry and I were in Washington, D.C., that the National League of Cities -- what did I say?
Dean.
And Dean, the National League of Cities came forward with the information about this prescription drug program. And when you hear of something that's not going to cost the city any money, and it's not going to cost the citizens any money, I thought it was pretty noteworthy. So we came home with that information, and I want to thank Patrick Goff and Heather Geier, and also our Assistant to a City Manager for getting right on this and getting the program together, to let the community know. The program, in fact, is a drug program that we're participating in for prescription drugs that are not covered by the particular insurance that they carry. And there is a 20% discount on all prescriptions that if they are not covered by your current plan, you can get a 20% discount. And there are participating pharmacies in the Wheat Ridge area. So it's something we can give back to our community, and I think it's a very worthwhile program. So if you have questions about that program, I'm sure, Heather, it's probably on the website at this point, I would guess. You can look it up on the website or call one of the counselors, and go into the pharmacies, and they will be in fact participating. So I want to thank staff for jumping right on it after we brought that information back, and also to the community member who called me and said, "Hey, guess what I heard? There's a prescription drug program." And I said, "Hey, guess what? We're going to offer it." So that information, I think, is noteworthy. That's all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stites.
Always. Several things. One, as I drive around, it's really kind of neat, because I'm seeing a lot of people do different landscaping to their yard, they're painting their houses, they're adding garages, they're adding on to their homes. And I think as a city, we thank you for doing that, because it does nothing but help the city raise the value of it. We've done a pretty good job on mowing weeds and the rideaways. There's still some. Please be careful of that. We absolutely don't want our community to look sloppy or become sloppy, and that's one of the best ways to do it, is to let that go. So please watch that. The positive thing, if your neighbors need help, help them out with trimming their yards or mowing their weeds. And now's the time, between now and fall, that you should be scheduling a block party. If you've had one, schedule it. If you've never had one, now's the time to do it. It's a fantastic way to meet your neighbors, get to know your neighbors, discuss particular problems in your neighborhood, or good things or bad things, and you know, try to alleviate that. And as always, please try to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sang.
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Langworthy.
Thank you. I just wanted to give a quick thank you to our volunteers and our citizens who really step up to the plate and help Wheat Ridge be a better community to be in. It warms my heart to know that there are people out there still willing to kind of put themselves out to help someone in dire need and ensure that they are safe, because that's one less person that we have to worry about ending up having a funeral for. So I would just like to thank all of them for all the help they do, and also our police staff are all that they do to keep us safe, too.
Thank you. Mr. Womble.
Yes, I want to send a thank you out to Sherri John and her committee members for all their hard work that they are doing on the Wheat Ridge Carnation Festival right now. I know how hard that is to take time out of your busy week in order to plan and then actually run the Wheat Ridge Carnation Festival. I'm very excited about the 40th year anniversary of the city of Wheat Ridge, and I know that we have been talking with the Wheat Ridge Carnation Festival about that event. So I'm really glad to see that go forward. And then finally, I want to send out a big welcome to all the new families and the very new and young faces that I'm seeing in the community that have just moved in over the past two months. It seems like houses are being purchased, and new families are moving in.
Thank you. Mr. Goke.
Yes, a couple of things here. Louise Turner come in and spoke about the 40th year celebration stuff, and I've been working on for over a week, talking with some of the original petitioners that have been involved in this process, like Ken Higgins. And we've got some -- I've also contacted Heather Geier, along with Sherri John, and also Janice Smothers, Staff Liaison, to expedite a collection and notification of those people so we can get those collectively brought together. Perhaps for a luncheon, I'm willing to sponsor that with my council dollars that I have, which is $3,000 in my account now. And we're not talking to that many people, but these are the people that did the grassroots work, went out, got the names on the petitions, scurried, got them up to Jefferson County in time to turn this into a city. So it would be nice to have some sort of videography of the remaining people that are still alive, even though I realize some of those people have passed away. Mr. Wallace has passed away, but his wife is still here, and many others. I stopped by and talked to Hank Stites today, and he filled in a few blanks for me. He was here during that process. So I think it's important we do recognize these people, and we make an effort to get that done. Also, I realize another way that all of the people that are buying houses and need to get stuff bought for their houses, I mean, we don't have a lot of places to buy washers and dryers and furniture and stuff like that in Wheat Ridge. But the thing is, is when you have it delivered to your house, you pay Wheat Ridge taxes. You pay Wheat Ridge a tax when it's delivered to your house. So if you have an opportunity to have that choice, whether you pick it up or deliver, just think, you could be supporting your community by having it delivered. That way, we can collect the 3% tax rather than paying Arvada 4-plus percent tax, and you might save some money on the deal. But just think about it, that's another way to support the community.
Thank you. I have just a few quick announcements. City staff members that participated as a team at the annual Applewood Business Association Golf Tournament last week, including Joyce Mannwaring, Ken Johnstone, Rich Swanson, and Ryan Szelzki, Economic Development Specialist, placed second in the tournament. The team has graciously donated their monetary cash awards to the Mayor's Public Art Campaign. So a big thanks and congratulations to the team for their generosity. Thank you, Ken. The Wheat Ridge Parks and Recreation Department has received a Great Outdoors Colorado Grant in the amount of $200,000 for the park construction located at 38th Avenue and Kipling Street. Grand awards for this project now total $475,000, which includes $275,000 for the Jefferson County Joint Venture Grant. Design, development, and construction drawings for the project are now 95% complete. Bidding is scheduled for August, and the contract is anticipated to be awarded in the fall. Citizens, mayors, Jefferson County Commissioners, city managers, and Table Mountain Animals Center VIPs tossed the first ceremonial dirt on June 30 for the new 9.7 million foothills animal shelter in Golden. The new 30,000-square-foot facility is scheduled to open no later than the end of 2010, and will feature larger, more comfortable holding areas for all animals, a better design for more efficient cleaning of animal spaces, extensive ventilation system to minimize the spread of illness, soundproofing to minimize animal stress, a community room for education, training, and public gatherings, and a veterinary area to provide basic animal welfare services. The new shelter will be located at 6th Avenue, west of Indiana Street, near the Colorado Mills Shopping Center in Golden. To learn more, please visit www.tablemountainanimals.org. And then, we've heard a lot about the budget lately. I asked Patrick for some information on the budget. The top 10 sales tax filers reported for January 1, 2009, to June 30, 2009, shows that sales tax revenue for this period compared to the same period in 2008 is down 5.4%, or about $420,000. Total sales tax for the same period is down about 7.16%. These are retail sales from December through May. And then lastly, the remaining schedule for the adoption of the I-70 Kipling Corridors Urban Renewal Plan is as follows. This is a tentative schedule. July 7, 6:00 p.m., Urban Renewal Meeting. July 20, at 6:30 p.m., City Council Study Session. August 6, 7:00 p.m., Planning Commission Meeting, and August 10, 7:00 p.m., City Council Public Hearing. Any questions on all that? Guess we're adjourned.